The time is six thirty-five P M. And this is the City of Inkster Planning Commission Meeting for May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. And this meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please. Oh, and turn your microphones on for me, ladies.
All right, Commissioner Chisholm.
Present.
Commissioner T. Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Hayes Bradford.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Excuse.
Excuse. Commissioner or Mayor Nolan, sorry.
Excuse.
Excused. Commissioner McGaney.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Excuse.
Commissioner Willis.
Excused.
And Commissioner A. Williams, present.
We have a call. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, we are down to item number two, adoption of the agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The agen- the agenda is adopted. We're down to item number three, adoption of minutes. Item three A, adoption of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any corrections?
Yes.
Alrighty, um, go right ahead.
Let's see, where was the? On. Um, can't find remember where it was. On the, on the, okay, there we go. On page number one, two, page three. I think it has me down as Commissioner T. Willis.
And you would like to be formally recognized as T. Williams?
That would be correct.
So page three. Uh, which item is that? You said, uh?
At the top of the page three, um, it's under the new business for the text amendment to allow vehicle repair facility major as a.
Oh, I see it.
Mm-hmm.
Under the nays.
Mm-hmm.
You all see it?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's strike that T. I'm sorry, well, striking it all together and put T. Williams.
That's the only thing I noticed.
Because if we look at. Oh, call, M. Willis was excused. So yes. That is correct. And your name is correct in the attendance.
Yes.
Alright, cool. Thank you.
Um. Under the text amendment to allow for vehicle repair facility major as a permitted use. I thought we all had nays. But it's got. Me and Hayes Bradford as a. And then Chisholm, Davis, and. And Williams as nays.
The motion read. Motion made to recommend denial.
Mm-hmm.
Of the special line used for.
Oh.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the right language. You're right. You're right. You're right. So, yeah, so we were correct. Yeah, okay. To deny. Thank you.
That's the confusing part, if you don't read it.
Right.
In its context. Alrighty. Everybody, all minds satisfied?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the minutes for March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five with the corrections.
Also moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number four. This is the first hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing but on the agenda. So this evening, our public hearing consists of the rezoning of, uh, Duning area, Cherry. Well, it says Cherry Harrison area and Henry Rough Parkwood area. But under, we don't have any new business. We don't have anything under unfinished business, but we do have items under miscellaneous. Which is item eight A, Twenty Twenty-Five Business and Community Impact Guide. And item eight B, Twenty Twenty-Five Business Ecosystem Field Guide. So at this time. If there's anyone from the general public who would wish to speak about those two particular items because they're not listed for a public hearing. Please approach the podium and state your first and last name for the record. And we will proceed from that point. Hearing nothing and seeing no movement, we will move right on down to item number five, public hearings. Under public hearings, we have case number Z twenty-five dash zero-one zoning map. Um, zoning map amendment. To allow for the rezoning sixty parcels from the M-one light industrial district to the R-one B, one family residential district. Then there's the Duning area, the rezoning of forty-nine parcels from the M-one light industrial district to the R-M restricted multiple dwelling low-rise district. And then there's the Cherry Harrison area, rezoning five parcels from the R-one B, one family residential district to the P-U-D Plan Unit Development District. And that is the Henry Rough Parkwood area. This is to conduct a public hearing for the consideration of amending the zoning ordinance map for the areas listed above. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Support.
It's been properly moved and supported. Discussion.
Okay, so we actually rezoned sixty parcels totaling approximately nine point eight five acres from M-one district to R-one B for Duning.
Correct.
And then we're rezoning forty-nine parcels totaling approximately two point oh five acres from the M-one light industrial district to the R-M restricted multiple dwelling low-rise district. That's the Cherry Harrison area. And then we're rezoning five parcels totaling approximately forty-three point zero five acres from the R-one B, one family residential district to the PUD. Plant Unit Development District for Henry Rough Parkwood area.
So what's the change?
You, you said it a little differently.
Yeah.
Cause you added the acreage in there?
No, 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 no. We, you had the, uh, PUD to Harrison.
And. You had the Duning to, to the.
Yeah.
If you look at the first bullet, the first bullet is for, for Duning.
Duning, the sixty parcels for Duning, the forty-nine is for Cherry Harrison, the five parcels for Henry Rough Parkwood.
Okay. Well, um. So the floor is open, uh, that was. So, okay, I think she was offering a freely amendment to what, uh.
Yes.
Was read, my apologies.
Everybody understood what was going.
So everybody on the same page? The motion maker, are you satisfied with?
Yes.
Okay, and what about the person who seconded it? Who seconded it?
Was it, I thought it was, no, I, I thought I motioned and you seconded it.
No, I didn't. I must have seconded it.
Okay. There we go. So, everybody good, right? On the same page?
We're on the same page.
Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Dowdell, you have the floor.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the purpose of this, um, rezoning of these areas has to do with, um. The city in, in trying to get our zoning and our master plan. Uh, somewhat in, in line with each other. Um, in March of twenty twenty-five, the city, um, went through the process of rezone, of not rezone, excuse me. Um, updating our master plan. And in our new master plan, we, some of the areas that we, we're suggesting in this for rezoning were, um. Majority of them were in the, in, M-one industrial area. But the way that our master plan, which we look ahead into the future. We, we came to the conclusion that those properties would probably be better served. For residential than they would necessarily industrial. And so that's where, why the process has gone so far. Um, Duning back in, I want to say twenty eighteen or so was rezoned from residential. To the M-one because they were on the north side of, um, Duning. There were going to be a, a, um, marijuana cultivation center. That was going to be created, which is still in the process of being, uh, created. And so to, to try to. Create the, the, the best, um, sway or the best way to, to do it, they decided to. Change a lot of the, the, um, the Duning area and what is the other street?
The Cherry Harrison area.
Yes, so we, we tried to streamline, have a, a lane, a sway of, of, um, M-one. Throughout the city, but as we had our consultant look at our, our future land use and things of that nature. Um, light industrial is, is not necessarily a, a real priority for, um. For the city. We, we did surveys and things of that nature and people. Um, emphasized they wanted housing, more t- different types of housing and things of that nature, so. Taking that into consideration, we, um, administration moved forward to the goal with the rezoning from, um. M-one to, um, residential. Um, and looking at our, um. Master plan. We took in that future li- use for that area would be mixed residential. And mixed, mixed residential, once, once we get the correlation straight, will be R-one A, R-one B, R-one C. Multi-family and, and multi-family one, R, R-M one, as well as a little bit of, um. E-one. So we. Are coming forth today to, to try to, to make our master plan and our, our zoning compatible. Uh, we still have some, some steps to do after this. If this was successful, we then are going to have to revise our zoning ordinance. To reflect, um, the future land use types that we're, we're proposing and things of that nature. Um. We, the third site, which is near Henry, Henry Rough and Parkswood. Parkwood. That area is zone residential, but it's probably one of the biggest sways of land that we have. If you look, it's, those fire parcels come up to about forty-three point five acres of land. Which is a, a large sway, sway of land. And. Being that, um, the city seemed that they, we wanted to have a, a say or control of our, the type of uses that we had. The suggestion for that land to be, um, res- um, designated a PUD. Means that any kind of development that comes forward, they would have to come to the, to the city council. And present, present a plan and negotiate with the city to, to do what, what we feel what we want to view the city as.
Absolutely.
So that's why, uh, we, we come forth with that, that potential use. Um. That's what I have so far. Is there any questions or anything of that nature?
Alright, thank you. Um, ladies, this is a public hearing, so any questions from up here or concerns right now before we turn it over to the public?
I do have a question, so, um, are some, are there already some houses that are in the light industrial district? Like the way it's zoned now?
That is correct.
Okay.
And so when, when that happened, those houses became, um, I would say non-conforming use, but most people would know it as grandfathered. As, as long as those houses were, were being used and utilized, they could exist. But to a certain extent, the, so one of the problems with that is when you have a non-conforming use. You can't modify it. You can't, uh, do anything else to it on the, on the exterior. Inside, you can, you can make it a palace, but outside it has to remain as it was once it was rezoned.
So, yeah, so those people in that area are limited by what is currently zoned. So if we were to update it, this will kind of work for the current residents and then kind of align, like you said, with our master plan. And perhaps even build other residential houses near where there are already ones that currently exist, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Cause as, like I said, as it stands, um, probably the person that owns one of those properties might have difficulty getting a mortgage. Because they, you know, their mortgage company is going to look at it and be like, this is industrial. And most cities do not have housing in industrial areas.
Right.
So that, you know, those, those are some of the problems. And then I want to say at the, on the north side of Duning. Right towards the end, um, of, and I can't see the, the street exactly. Um, there was some Habitat for Humanity houses that were built.
That is Meadowdale.
Okay, and so there, there, there is a problem, you know, if something happens, if, if, if there's a fire and it, and the damage is more than, uh, what we say the worst of the house is. They can't rebuild it.
Mm-hmm.
So this is also sort of a way to try to, uh, amend issues with, with, with the houses that are in a, a, um, zoning area that's not compatible with housing.
Gotcha. I think that's. The only question I have so far, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So we have R-one B. That already exists, right? So we have R-one A, R-one B, and R-one C.
Correct.
And then we said, we're trying to just change this to one family residential district, um.
As it currently stands, the, the master plan zoning areas, we're saying the mixed use and all those things, they don't exist.
Right, okay, so that's where, yeah, that's where I'm trying to reconcile, so then.
I tried to come, we tried to come with, with, close to what was around the area and things of that nature. That would allow for, if there was some new development coming then, once we do, we, we, re, um. Re, reorganize our, our, um, zoning ordinance, we can then go to the.
Accommodate the mixed use development. Gotcha. Okay, now I'm officially finished.
Alrighty. Commissioners, anything else up here before we turn it over to the public? Commissioner T. Williams.
So for the, um, public, um, cause I'm, that, I've gotten several calls in regards to the issue, especially of the Cherry Harrison, um, area. Um, those properties that are currently existing in their current, um, condition, will they be grandfathered clause then?
Correct. If, if you had a, had a storage, you, the storage, um, yard and things of that nature.
Yes.
The same way that the, the houses became, um, grandfathered, they would become grandfathered.
Okay. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Anybody else? Alrighty, um, hearing none from up here. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. This is an opportunity for you all to speak about this rezoning process. If there are any questions, concerns, or comments that you all have in the general public, please approach the podium at this time and state your first and last name for the record.
How y'all doing today?
Good, how you doing?
My name is Ruth Williams. I got some property over in Spruce Hickory area up to Cherry. And I just want to make sure I heard him say just now that anything existed there is being gra- grandfathered in there.
That's correct.
So we got some storage property is grandfathered in.
Yes.
That's all I need to hear.
Alright, come right over, come right on up now.
How everybody doing, uh?
Good evening.
My name is Antoine Hawkins and I'm speaking on behalf of, uh, three zero zero four three Park, Parkwood. Um, so I understand it, well, my question is mainly, this is a, we have vacant land out there. The church sits on there as well. Um, is the vacant land going to be grandfathered for non-conformal use or? You know, cause I, I know that this, uh, particular area, the P, uh, the PUD is going to allow for recreational, commercial, as well as, as residential. So how would that affect our vacant land?
Nope.
Oh, their vacant land, you're speaking of is at the corner of Parkwood and Henry Rough?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, the way that the PUD stands, that there's, there's a residential version, there's a commercial version, things. So. They would have to, someone would have to come for it to be the commercial aspect that you're saying. They would have to come in and ask, ask for the commercial aspect of it. If, if, if later on, and like, like I said, when, um, uh, I don't know if you have future, our future. Then we would deal with how, how it is as far as the, the city council would, uh, develop, you as a developer would come in and you would have to be, present a plan and show us how. This is going to fit with the, the culture of, of the area, because it used to be a high school area or?
It was, uh.
Elementary.
Ele- elementary school, private academy.
And so, like I said, it's such a large sway of land. Um, we want to have a, have a say on what, what kind of development is.
So currently, by just being vacant, we don't have any plans of building on it, we're fine, um.
Well, it, it's, it's already currently still residential, but, but the PUD just means it's just an extra step that you have to give us a plan.
Got you.
See what's going on.
Alright, thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Sherida Chabon and I currently own properties at Cherry Hickory area. So my question, and I just want to be clear, that the properties is in, uh, zone for M-one right now, will they remain M-one? I don't think so.
You said Cherry and Hickory?
If the property is currently functioning as M-one, like say for instance.
It currently is. Well, I'm sorry. Still have not quite developed on it just of yet, but as to, that's my master plan.
So.
So.
So you're just asking if you haven't finished quite developing, if it's still grandfathered in?
Right.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yeah, okay, it's a vacant lot, or is it?
But it's, it is. It is as, as this moment, yes. But right, it's being used for storage.
Okay.
Is it fenced up?
Not quite yet.
But it's still being used for storage. So that already, that process already started.
Okay.
So I.
If you're using it for storage, then, then you're fine, but if I would. I would say speed it up a little bit.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, if you're already using it for storage.
Clear that it still will be zoned M-one.
As long as you're using it for storage.
As long as it actively, as long as it's actively being used, like he said, if you're storing right now on that property. Suggest you fence it up.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, is there anybody else from the general au- uh, public that would like to speak at this time?
I have to be attorney to figure out some of this stuff. My name is Dormin Mack and I'm a homeowner on Plum Street, the south side. My question is, um, what is this master plan?
The master plan is, is essentially the city's vision of the future. Every five to ten years. City is supposed to take a, a look at what's, what it has, what it wants to be, where it wants to go. Um, the master plan is, is on, online, um, if you go to the city's website, you can read it and things of that nature. But basically, it's, it's, uh, a goal that we wish to achieve for the city. If, if we're saying we want more jobs, we say this is where we want more jobs to be. If we want more housing, this, these, this is what we view this area of housing to be. You know, it, it, it may happen, it may not happen in that lifetime, but that's what, what the city is attaining, trying to attain.
Okay, other question is, on Dunham Street, have y'all dropped a plan about the marijuana growth, uh, on the, um.
North side.
North side.
Um, my understanding is they're, they're still working on it.
Used to be a junkyard there, uh, uh, yeah, I, I, I'm familiar with that area. I was wondering what was going on there. As far as the residents on the north side of Plum. Wh- what's the plan for the residents that have been there? I don't see a lot of them here in participation, but wh- what's the plan for those folks to have homes there? Are they good?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, I'll pass the word for them. Next time they should be in attendance, but, uh. And I believe that is all.
Okay, I, if I may speak, um, we're, one of the reasons, like I said, we, I think it's at least twenty-two houses. That are in that area, uh, between Duning, Plum, and, and, and what have you. And like I said, if, if it stayed light industrial, it doesn't help them as far as when they, like I said, try to sell their property. Update their property, you know, the exterior of the property and things of that nature. So this is actually trying to, to help them not be in a situation, like I said, if, if you need a mortgage. And the co- and you, you can't get a mortgage because it's not zoned correctly.
Okay, I see. A lot of them is old-time residents and I don't think they move anywhere. I know, a lot of them are, been there long, I'm thirty-one years and a lot of them is more than I there, but I understand what you're saying.
When, when you're like referring to like, for example, exterior additions or, um, development where they're currently zoned, it, you're saying they could potentially, um. Encounter roadblocks, so even something as simple as a fence? Or?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
I want his, his question about the property on the south side next to the railroad tracks. I did reach out to the applicant sometime ago, well, not necessarily the applicant, who, the past legal representation, I forget who it is now. Um, they were going through whatever they were going through, but that legal representation works in the courts as a magistrate or something like that now. So they were going through different steps in that process and trying to move along. Um, I'm not sure how COVID and inflation and all that affected them. I know I was in that area during the Habitat for Humanity, one of the houses right before COVID was announced, and then everything shut down. So I'm not a hundred percent sure what's going on with the applicant, but it has been some time and they've been really delayed in that process. Uh, just so you know, you do have other residents who have voiced concerns about the status of it, how it looks, just a hole in the ground. Come cut the grass, you know, all of those types of things, as any applicant should be on top of it and keeping it under care and continue keeping the city updated. So I'll make sure that I reach out again or go back through my emails to find out. Um, just so we can make sure you get that information too, if I have it forwarded to you already, just so we could kind of be on top of that. Because that is one of the questions that our residents hold us accountable for. It's like, hey, what's going on with this business? You all haven't held your feet to the fire like you held mine to the fire with X, Y, and Z. So it should be equal across the board, so we owe you that. Alright, if there's anybody else from the general audience, please feel free to approach.
I just, hi, my name is Zahira Sotan. And I just have two questions. One, about the city plan, is it on the website? Because I was looking for it. And also, the agenda. Is that posted on the website before the meeting and the minutes? Because I couldn't find that either.
So the master plan should have been posted on the website once it was finalized.
It's on, in the, if you go to the planning department, uh, website, it's, it's probably, um, the fourth bullet point, point down.
Okay, I might have missed it. I was just looking. I've been on to. And the agenda for the meetings, is that on the website too? Cause I couldn't find that either.
And you're looking for planning commission agendas?
Yes.
Okay, it should have been on there as soon as like, uh, when you see it, there's a meeting announcement, if you scroll to the bottom where it says community involvement. And if you clicked on planning commission meeting, it has the agenda, it will have a Zoom link as well.
Okay.
But let's do this, if you could jot your email address down.
Okay.
He has it already, or it's on the sign-in sheet?
She has it and it's on the sign-in sheet.
We'll just double check to be safe, and then that master plan, if you can't get it, uh, just let us know, we'll make sure we get you a copy email.
Thank you so much.
I've also found that if I Google specifically Inkster Master Plan twenty twenty-five.
It'll come up that way.
It'll come up that way too.
Okay. Thank you so much.
No problem. Anybody else? Alright, if all minds are satisfied, commissioners, do you? Oh, I'm sorry.
William Jackson.
William Jackson.
That's my daughter and my granddaughter.
Okay, good evening.
What I'm concerned about, I own the little building right there on the corner, twenty-nine forty-three Harrison. Uh, I might understand that it's to stay as it is, or unless somebody s- submit a plan for, to rezonate for in the light industry, I think it's residential now.
Yep, twenty-nine forty-three Harrison, you said right at the corner, uh, Harrison and.
Harrison and Cherry.
He would be the, that would be the northeast corner of Harrison.
Okay. And you were asking if it's gonna?
If it's, the zone will remain the same unless somebody submit a plan to change it for light industrial, I think. What, what is it now?
It's currently zoned as M-one, light industrial, because you were already pre-existing in that particular property. It, your property is still residential.
Right.
So, and now what we're proposing to do, uh, to, to bring it current, to our current status and, 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 and zoning, uh. For twenty twenty-five and moving forward, we plan to re- keep the remaining properties, uh, just slightly west of you. And slightly east of you, we're going to take them back to residential. Cause right now they're currently M-one, you basically grandfathered clause in because your property was pre-existing as a, as a residential property. So your, 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 your property status will not change.
The guy across the street, right across the street, he asked me about the property right on the corner, it's thirty, thirty ninety or whatever that is.
Okay.
So he said that the.
Would that be this? Would that be the southeast corner? Would that be the southeast corner?
Uh, west, west Harrison, we're on the corner of Harrison Chair on the west.
Okay, if it's on the west side, then that would also be now zoned as more, uh, that would go from the M one. It's light industrial back to a residential. He's talking about that uh two-story gray building.
The Roberts living.
Yeah, yeah, he's talking about that two-story gray building, that's on the opposite side of the church.
Right.
So yes, that 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 would go back in, uh, now technically, under the current status. Because that building was technically uh in a M one zone and it was not occupied.
Right, it it lost the the notic.
He lost the grandfather clause that your property has, but now with this proposed amendment to the zoning. He would go back into a residential status.
What what about the lots uh going north of twenty-nine forty-three?
So.
Lots, there's vacant lots owned by my granddaughter.
That are on Harrison?
Yeah.
You said going north?
Going north?
Oh, it's a chair, yeah.
Say on the same side of the street.
Say, yes, that that's all gonna, that's that all remain residential.
Okay.
You're welcome.
For to clarify, um, I know, of course, if someone's already in the residence and it's been grandfathered in. And then, of course, if they're using the industrial building and it's, you know, that's gonna be grandfathered in if we switch over. But if the building exists, just to clarify, but no one's using it or it's not being used for any type of business purpose that we know of. Even if they do plan on using it, they wouldn't be able to, they would lose that.
Hi, my name is Bianca Sultan. I own the vacant commercial lots. That are adjacent to my grandfather's property, because we call ourselves, you know, that's, you know, family, family land. But I was under an impression, and I'm a hundred percent sure, when I bought my lots, that I paid more for them. They charged me more for them because they are commercial, and I think my grandfather's property is commercial, not residential either.
In two thousand and eighteen, okay, well, for, depending on the, on what time you bought it. Yeah, at one point it was zoned differently. I think the zoning changed.
That's correct.
It was, it was um R M originally, and when it went to 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 M one, it that changes. M one is more, is like commercial, it's a little bit more.
One, I think that's when I bought those lots and they were.
And at that time, it was, it was, it was, it was M one.
Way more for them than just.
Yeah, it was M one at that time. Do we know when that actually changed? For the Harrison Cherry?
I don't know exactly, but I I know, like I said, the um eighteen is what I could find in in.
It got changed in late twenty-one, early twenty-two.
Okay, during.
I can tell you when it changed, because you think about it, twenty, twenty-one, city was closed because of COVID. So they didn't have any business for almost late twenty-one, when they opened back up, so it had to be late twenty-one, early twenty-two, when all this took place.
And so, and then, if they propose to change some people's lives that are commercial to residential, does that affect the taxes?
That would, that's actually unfortunately, that that's a assessor.
But it should though. It it should, because we getting decreased value in a property when they go on the residential instead of commercial.
Yeah, I I get what you're saying. He was saying, yeah, that would had to go before the assessor, it probably wouldn't be necessarily automatic. You know, there's three different options, we go before the assessor, you can appeal it and say, hey, and then the board of review could say, you're right, agree with you and lower it. Um, it could stay the same, or it could increase depending on, you know, what they're looking at. But yes, that is something that would have to be taken before the board, board of review.
And that happens in the month of March, so if it does get rezoned.
Okay.
Or go back to uh residential, then you would uh take a look at the assessment. And that comes out, I think, the end of February, first part of March. Yeah, so then at that point, you would go to, if if you do not agree with that and you want to have that reevaluated at that time, you could go to the board of review.
Okay, but that's.
That's always in March, uh, and I'm sure it will be posted on the website for twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Sure, I'm pretty sure that's February, isn't it?
What, the board of review?
The board review is.
The assessment might come out February, but the board review.
Board is in March, yeah, the assessment comes out, but then then it gives a, what, forty-five day window or something?
Uh, no, well, they have three meetings. This, I mean, it's it's forty, might be forty-five days. But it's three meetings, so you have to.
So it's a three, there's a, there's a, there's a several meetings that will be held for residents and businesses. All 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 entities in the city of Inkster who would like to have their tax taxable values reviewed at that time and or classification. And in this case, it would be a both for you, it would be, you'll be looking at possibly the classification. And 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 the uh, the classification and the actual value.
Okay, but this going back to what my grandfather, when my grandfather was up here is miscommunication, because his property is also commercial too. He was talking about the grandfather, then his property.
I I I think um we would have to have someone double check his actual property address to see what the current uh assessment value. Assessment of it is, if it's being assessed as residential or if it's being assessed as commercial.
What's the address on that again? Twenty-nine forty-three Harrison. No problem, thank you. Twenty-nine forty-three Harrison.
So the question would be, is what is it currently being assessed as, is it currently being assessed as a residential? Uh, which was grandfathered in, or is it being assessed as a light industrial?
I'd have to talk to the to the assessor.
Assessor office.
I don't want him to speak. And that's why I wanted the address again, so we could make formal note of that, um, and double check. And I believe we had a hand up. You good, okay. Just to be on the safe side, I think we were under one understanding and then it. As further questions and discussion came out, it kind of sort of went in a different direction, but yeah, let's get clarity and be sure. Alrighty, um. I think this is.
Yeah, that's yours.
Alrighty, so, um. Now we were commissioners and we're going back to the public. Commissioners, did you have anything additional? Oh, okay. And just the last call for the general public, were there any further questions that came up during this public hearing before we close the public hearing? Alrighty, seeing no movement in hearing, nothing. Um, the floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, support.
And property moved and supported. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. And Mr. Dalde, I know we said earlier something about, well, I'm sorry, not we, I said earlier, there was nothing under new business. But just out of curiosity, because we did close this and this is just a zoning map amendment, do we have to refer this to city council, or is it, do we do? Okay, that's what I thought. It's just my confusion, because it's not under new business, that's all, so it's really two votes under this public hearing.
So, yeah, going forward, it goes to city council with your recommendation, it's two here, it's two readings of it.
Right.
And then, it it um, they they approve or or deny it.
Okay. Um, at this time, the floor is open for a motion to approve or deny the zoning map amendment to city council.
So move.
It's been a property moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to unfinished business. Looks like we don't have any. Down to new business, we just took care of that new business, if you will, under public hearings. We're down to item eight miscellaneous, item eight A, twenty twenty-five Business and Community Impact Guide.
Alright, so just, this is me. So, uh, to give some uh context for the audience, um, at our last planning commission meeting back in March. We had a few cases come before of, before us, one of them being for um opening an auto shop. Um, and right now, we have a a moratorium on auto repair, uh, we also have a moratorium on.
Auto car dealerships?
Yep, dealerships and, and so, um. There was some discussion between the commissioners on what are our options if we have these types of buildings that still exist. But we currently can't open them as what they used to be used for, because we have moratoriums. Or um simply the public doesn't want them. So that's part of the master plan. Um, it's supposed to help bodies like this in making decisions and and hopefully we can achieve our vision. Based on what residents have told us they wanted, and part of that process was surveying residents, getting their feedback, saying, what's your priority? What do you want, what don't you want? And those were one of the things they didn't want. And so, with that being said, um, the master plan is very lengthy, it's over, is it a hundred pages about? It might be a little over a hundred pages. Good read, I still encourage everybody to take their time to read it. But um, with, it could be, you know, if you're trying to refer to it quickly or use it as a reference to guide discussions, especially with cases. Um, like I had just mentioned, um, it can maybe be a little overwhelming. And so, uh, then it was like, well, why don't we come up with something that can help us in making those types of decisions quickly? Or at least help get us all on the same page about um how we want to go about having those discussions. And what could we consider in place of those old buildings that we no longer want? Um, auto repair shops and repurposing them, I don't think is on anyone's brain normally. I don't know that we actually have seen it in real time, what that could look like. And so I created the Business and Community Impact Guide and then also looked at some case studies. That um we could use as an examples for what those buildings could be turned into that are more aligned with our master plan. Um, you know, people want restaurants, they want cafes, they want business and tech centers. They want, you know, uh grocery stores, gardens, that's more of what the community wants. And so the guide looks like this, I don't know, could we post it online? Probably, I guess we could, huh, if we wanted to.
Yes.
But um, looks like this, it has some quick data about our population, um, and our demographics. Including we're approximately twenty-five thousand residents, um, mostly black and African American at seventy-four point four percent. The median household income is thirty-nine thousand, um, and that was data from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three. And thirty-six point three percent of our residents live below the poverty line.
Mr. Dalde, was this available for everybody? Everybody have one?
Does everyone have?
No. Come on the table, okay.
And so, um, our challenge is that we have limited access to capital and infrastructure. Um, and we have uh restricted equitable opportunities for businesses and residents. And so in order to foster a thriving city, we must develop pro- policies and attract sustainable development. Um, and part of that is, like I said, um, trying to make sure that we, we um follow our master plan. And promote the city of Inkster as a place of potential, um, and we do have a lot of potential. We're located in a desirable area, we're only ten minutes away from the airport, you know, in any one direction. Go this way to Ann Arbor, that way to Detroit, um, and uh we have Michigan Ave, which is, you know, very popular street. Um, that we're, that goes straight through the city, so uh we definitely have a lot of potential. And we're hoping to attract uh the development that we would like to see. Um, also as a part of this impact guide, to wrap that part, to wrap up this one. Um, also included some um data about liquor and convenience stores, because that has been something that's also come up before this body. Um, a few times, and the residents are also clear about the fact that we do not want any more liquor stores. Um, and so, uh, the CDC defines high liquor store density as over, you know, one store per square mile. And if we're approximately six square miles and we have more than ten liquor stores. Then we will be considered a city that has a high density of liquor stores, um, based on the square mileage we have.
And marijuana?
And marijuana, that too.
It just, just to give you all some background, um, what recently happened is we had some gas stations coming up. And they were trying to start the domino effect of asking for a liquor license.
In the gas station.
In the gas station, and whereas some do have that, we saw what was getting ready to open up. Uh, we already have what's established, and it was like, if this one comes to be more competitive and they're asking for one, and we grant it. Every gas station in the city of Inkster is gonna be asking, and it was just gonna be over abundance. And then it wouldn't be fair and competitive to the liquor stores that are already here.
Mm-hmm. And then, you know, we have cities like Westland, Garden City, Dearborn that are neighboring us. And they're within, they're close access, we have close access to their stores too, right? So even if you were to consider those, we have more than uh an abundance of access to liquor stores and, to your point, uh marijuana. Um, and so if we just were talking about city limits, we have um ten or more, so about one point six seven stores per square miles. But if you were to also talk about, like, including Westland and those cities that literally were only separated by one street. We have in excess over fifteen liquor stores that people can go to. So I think we're all comfortable in saying that we definitely don't have a problem accessing liquor. Um, and so I included some of that data in this community impact guide, because, like I said, the whole point is to help bodies like ours. Including city council who make these major planning decisions, to be able to guide our conversations. And then when we do get cases in front of us that are asking for these things that, as I mentioned, our residents said they simply don't want. Then we have more than just um experience, which is still important, or hyperbole, we can actually put data to the conversation. And speak with numbers and facts and make it a more concrete discussion, if I'm making sense.
Hyperbole.
Some people think you're just, you know, like, over-exaggerating, and you're like, no, we're not over-exaggerating, this is how many we have. And there's a legitimate reason for everyone's concern as to why we don't want anymore. So, um, this guide and talks about that, our desirable businesses include, like I mentioned, retail and commercial businesses, bookstores, grocery stores. Home goods and furniture stores, tech service-based businesses, um, food and beverage, like sit-down restaurants and cafes. I know that was one of my concerns, um, having something where it encourages people to stay in Inkster and spend money. Not just pass through, pick something up and keep going.
Oh, hold on, did you move from the impact guide to the next one?
No, it's it's, this is, this is all a part of the impact guide, I think it just got stapled weirdly. Yeah, it's all the same.
This is item A and B.
No, it's all the same part, it's, yeah, it's all the same thing. And so, um, you have that section here where it talks about desirable businesses and redevelopment, healthcare. You know, maybe we can use our urgent care, or, you know, education and workforce development, trade schools, training centers, STEM learning centers. And then, of course, mixed use and residential development, including smaller housing stock for smaller families. Um, we have a lot of single-family homes, you know, can accommodate, you know, four bedrooms and. But the average family size has decreased over the years, and some people just don't need that much house. Um, and so if we can get those smaller, like, one-bedroom apartments or even studios for younger, single people. Um, that would be something that we will be more looking for. And so, uh, just to to tie it up, I, on this side is where I use the strategies for redevelopment. And I included case studies for how we could repurpose some of the auto buildings if we wanted. And these are all case studies for, I tried to stick as nearby to Michigan or Detroit as possible. So, for example, the first one refers to the Ford building in Detroit, and they um turned it into an office building. Uh, some have um turned it into tech startups, um, and others, I think, have also turned it into garden centers. So, that's that one. Any questions before we move on to the second one?
You were like a chat G P T before chat G P T.
I work in data, so I know how to actually research some stuff, for sure. Any questions about that or comments or feedback? Hopefully it was what we, you guys are kind of looking for when we said we wanted this?
Yes.
This is great, um, and I say that because when we go to other communities and they have all of this information before them. As to why they're saying, definitive information, why they're saying no to an entity, I've been in those meetings. Um, council meetings, if you will, when I worked at the House of Representatives, and those were some of the cities we represented. And it was just a flat-out no, and they had this definitive information before them, and those applicants did not try them like they try us.
Yeah.
Or forced their hand, so this is great.
Thank you. I agree with that too. I feel like unfortunately, we do get that pushback, for whatever reason, you know, can't speak on why. But I do feel like they would probably try us a little bit more than they would other cities, to your point.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Alright, so now the Business Ecosystem Field Guide is.
So this is item eight B now.
This is item eight B.
Alrighty.
And so, it's designed to help city planners and council members make informed decisions about business. And so it's designed to help city planners and council members make informed decisions about business development. So we can be more intentional and identify the gaps in our local economy. Because when we are approving businesses or reviewing these cases, it is about creating an ecosystem of sorts, right? And so um, and these businesses are supposed to complement one another so that we can have a thriving economy. You know, that's, that's essentially the point. And so now, the next page where I talk about the current Inkster businesses is not all-inclusive, I will say that. Um, I did get most of my information from the Inkster um, commerce, uh.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, thank you. I was having a blank for a moment. And then um, I did try to do a little bit more Google searching to try and fill in some of those gaps, but um, that's, that's was my main resource. And so, and I divided it up into these different groups like automotive, food and dining, retail and shopping, healthcare and wellness, professional services and entertainment. Um, and so if we think some of these things are short, like some of these sections or categories are short, um, then hopefully. That would help us kinda get our like, you know, our uh, thoughts going about what we would like to put there in order to make them. Longer, make this list longer.
It's not like you already have enough on your plate, but I know these are in electronic form, but we received it via email. But those blurbs you just gave explaining what these documents are, would you find, because you said it's for council as well as planning commission? Would you be so kind as to send it to those electronic copies with the blurbs you just stated to the city clerk and ask her to disperse it to city council?
Yeah, and then, and I actually did show up to a city council meeting and and say that out loud too. So um.
With that blurb, it, instead of it being a thing of, why are we receiving this in email, this from a planning commissioner? It could be, you know, just expanded upon briefly and say. What you said, and then those who get it say, okay, if they read that blurb and then receive this information. And it would just help them when we're talking about why are we doing this or why aren't we doing this?
No, add blurb. I got it. And then the next page talks about potential Inkster businesses and so, um, like I said, it's a part of, a part of it is about identifying the gaps. Um, and these are just recommendations that of course are open to your feedback and suggestions about. What these types of um, categories could look like, so I have retail and consumer goods. I would love a grocery store co-op, you know, something that had really good quality produce. You know, that's the dietitian in me, I guess. But um, aside from. Food Max and now, what is it called? That's right there, Garden Fresh.
And the African, uh.
And it shares a space with uh, Family Dollar and so, um, or uh.
What's the African um, store on, African market on?
I think I actually have it listed.
Caribbean.
African and Caribbean market.
Okay, so those three.
So those three, um, and then pharmacy or health store, health-related stores. Um, even if we think about it, wellness is, there's an uptick in people being interested in those types of products. So if someone came and they actually had like, you know, homeopathy type, natural product type things. You know, I'm sure like our residents will love that. I know I would love that. Skincare, whatever.
My question too, not to you, but just in general is, how do we would even, not how do we would even? How would we even entice? Cause really the pharmacies are the big name with CVS and Walgreens and they left together. Um, and relocated our prescriptions to whichever location we wanted to. You know, how would even sustain something? Because I know they had one in Twin Towers and I guess it did not work out. In the capacity that they desire and so it departed as well. So now we're back at square one without having a pharmacy in Inkster at all. And it's almost like they do us a disservice because they're here, just like Chase was and then they leave. And McDonald's as well. And I am just be honest with you guys, when McDonald's first left. I was working at the House of Representatives, so we had those connections with those regional managers and everything who actually would answer your calls or emails. And then I got the cold shoulder. And what the end result was, well, we reviewed the portfolio. Oh, and just so you know. Because of the connections I had, I had to go through the president of the DDA in Garden City to get a response from McDonald's Corporation. They were giving me the cold shoulder as an elected official for the city of Inkster in a space it used to occupy. And what it turned out to be was, oh, we reviewed our portfolio and the numbers didn't add up. And so therefore we're closing that location and diverting business to the other two. So basically they said, you guys, your money isn't enough for us to make a profit off of, so we're gonna leave. Now, from a business aspect, I understand that, but from an economic development standpoint, it was like, wow, you didn't even give us an opportunity. You didn't come to us and say, hey. It's declining, you tell us what can we do to help or how can we work together? It wasn't even a thing of like, when you look at, well, let's limit our hours. If our business is dropping after eight PM, let's no longer be open after eight PM. Until, you know, eight AM, whatever the next thing might be. So that's just my thing. I see this with the potential Inkster businesses. And sometimes I'm like, you know, I asked Chase, I said, so you mean to tell me if we turn into a thriving community, you'll put a branch back in Inkster? And they basically said, yes. That's not fair to us. You know, that you get to leave when everything's bad and come back when it's good, so you can make some money. What about us?
The drugstores and what have you, it's, we're, we're not the only ones being hit, because you've gone, it's moving.
This is true.
We're moving to this uh, online domain. Deliver everything to your house and people don't have to go anywhere. So they have, they're competing with those markets really.
So you said we just about to be in the house taking medicine?
You know, some, I guess you can say, what they, what they would categorize as were like narcotics and things that. People would still have to go in person for. Like those heavier, like narcotics, the opiates and things they would still have to go, go in-store for. Um, I also think that sometimes people, you know, don't wanna wait for something like a prescription to. Get mailed if they don't have to, but I also think if we found someone who had a business model where they could accommodate, you know, both. I think that's where some of the smaller stores will maybe have kind of like fallen behind, right? The reason they're unable to compete with places like Amazon is because they're not offering that service to, to mail and mail easily.
Point, we've got to be more adept at pivoting when things change, because this world is just shifting. It doesn't look, we're not horse and buggy anymore, and we're not typewriters anymore, you know what I'm saying? These things are dying and re, and we just have to keep up with trends. And not, not be stuck on one thing, cause that might not, to, to that point, that just may not be something that. Would work for us if you can't sustain it, to keep their doors open for that kinda stuff. I don't, I, I, I'm just saying, we might have to just come up with some more creative.
What I just heard Commissioner Hayes Barver saying is creating a pharmacy where he had a first pharmacist robot in Inkster.
Yeah, um, I'm, and I think part of that is, you know, doing some old-fashioned research. Figuring out who it is that we want and starting to build those relationships and, and having those discussions. And then of course, marketing Inkster as a place that is, like I said, um, a strong. Community with a legacy that, and like I said, if we don't think we deserve better, we won't get better. So we have to demand that for ourselves, um, and put in a little elbow grease to get it, quite honestly, right? So I think it's also about marketing ourselves in a different way too. Cause with the perception, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't think it's as good as we want it to be about who Inkster is.
This is true. I actually was talking to some residents today for about two hours. And that was one thing, it was the re- reputation of Inkster. And then the second thing was, we're still at this blockade, if you will. Of everybody saying they're not receiving any type of information about what's going on in the city. And I, I get it from, and I was telling them, again, we're at this point where we. Serve different populaces and different groups, right? Some of our residents, and this actually was in my, one of my business classes I just took, get their information from Facebook. Some are gonna get theirs from the newspaper if they still get one delivered, some the internet, some wanted via text, some email. But it's all these different avenues, some feel like it's oversaturation with Code Red. And then some don't even wanna sign up for Code Red. I had somebody today said they don't get any information. I said, well, we have Code Red, would you like to sign up for it? You get the text messages, things of nature about meetings and whatnot, road closure, something like that. She said, no.
So how does she say it, social media?
And that's exactly was one of the main things. And I told her what we have to take into account though, is the cost of printing and postage, and then she said the water bill. And I said, we've talked about that too. And it's just really of, how you s- how you spin that and put it under, but the other resident stated. Well, the neighbors across the street got their water bill and all they pulled out was the bill and left everything else in there, which talked about the water meter installation and everything. And didn't look at nothing else. So I was like, you know, it's, it's, we date if we do, we date if we don't, but you, you're right, some do want it via mail. So it's just something to look at when we're talking about marketing the city, with all aspects we take to make sure we cover it, because we can't. I've walked the city multiple times now for different occasions, but we can't do that with every single thing that comes out. It's just, you know, exorbitant. So we, we just have to figure out some ways to make sure that we're hitting everybody efficiently.
Gotcha, yeah, I agree. And so then the next page just kind of explains why, so the business type and why we need it. I'll just read off one example for our, for our, our remaining audience member and whoever's watching online. Um, so for example, example, grocery store or co-op, why? Inkster lacks a full-service grocery store, offering fresh, healthy and affordable food options. A co-op or small chain grocer would improve food security and encourage local shopping. Um, and so as you can see, I kinda break down the business type and then put in the why. Like urgent care, expanding access to healthcare, reduce strain on emergency rooms. Provide more immediate medical care and support community wellness, so just giving those um, those reasons or the why. Cause I feel like the why is important. And uh, then just finding and partnering with businesses, so like I said, we gotta do the, we gotta do the work. Pinned it in a little elbow grease and start reaching out and into these different industries and trying to encourage them. Especially once we get um, certified, uh, RRC, you know, certification, then that part of us achieving that. Is saying, hey, we streamlined our processes, we are ready and in a position to develop, like. Come and work with us and this is why.
For the audience, they might not know what RRC.
Oh, redevelopment-ready community. So we're in the process of becoming redevelopment-ready community certified.
Now, these people that buy these buildings.
He's gonna ask you to come up to them. So, okay, I'll restate it.
Um, so she's asking, for example, anyone who's bought, like the person who bought the building that's right there on the corner of Inkster. And Michigan Ave, like where the old pharmacy and uh, even the Coney Island, right? Like, why hasn't anything happened with that yet?
Well, just recently, the building department and ordinance tagged them all. So they're enforcing it as we speak, if you will. And when I say tag them all, I went past the buildings and there's orange stickers on it. From the uh, building department. So exactly what you're talking about with them bringing it up to code. And occupying it and things of that nature, because they haven't come forth with a plan of action. And did anything since they purchased the property, whether it was from us or from a private um, person. Cause you know, a lot of those buildings, some of them got bought through the Wayne County Public Auction. And then they just sat on the saddle. I honestly thinks, like some do, they'll buy the property, wait for the values to go, because they're gonna try to flip them. Uh, but we need development. So that's, that's, in short, yes, you have a valid question. People have been asking that. And that was on the checklist to start going that route and then moving it forward over to. The Twenty-second District Court, so Judge Johnson can make a ruling on it and we can move forward.
Any other questions?
No, that I can think of. I just know that people that have these buildings, I know the ones um, with the green, they've been sitting there too long like that.
Yep.
And that's more blank in the city, so how do you expect people to come in the city when you got all these, you know?
Absolutely.
And nothing's been done.
You're absolutely right. Except being painted green.
I do know to, to his uh, comment that the city is trying to work in encouraging or requiring. Or at least at the very least monitoring and finding those who are not doing anything.
Any other city that I'm aware of and have, you know, these blank buildings and nothing being done and not brought up to code.
They um, what, what I saw too, and like we spoke of earlier, um. With how different applicants try us, the city I'm saying, and. In those other communities, literally, if you have six months, you have six months. So you know, to occupy, get it up and going. Now you can go back and ask for an extension. Um, and go that process, but what we, in different cases I've seen, and cause they've been here before in council chambers. Where they were contesting us because X, Y, Z, that we were following our rule, our regulations. They said, we'll see you in court. So then they filed a lawsuit. And just because where we are financially and stuff like that, it wasn't always, you know. The best use of your tax dollars are our tax dollars. And it just kinda get the can got kicked down the road instead of just immediately like, nope, you didn't follow this, you voided your contract, we're moving forward. We're doing X, Y, and Z. This is your responsibility as the purchaser and as the buyer. Uh, but that's hoping to get all in line with that right now, so that all of that past practice. And that mentality and anybody from outside looking in will know, you're not coming to Inkster to buy this and sit on it and do absolutely nothing. A lot of our residents, you know, like yourself has said, hey, these ordinances need to be strengthened. You need to get a city more teeth. Instead of just saying, oh, we tagged it today and in six months we gonna go back. Uh-uh, we tagged it today, you got fourteen days or whatever it is. Thirty days to respond before we start moving forward.
And this should be presented and moving forward, um, if anyone comes in and wants to open a business, something like that should be in the contract.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, you have X amount of days to bring it up to code or if you're going to be fined or whatever else could be, you know.
What's that called? Uh, Mr. Dada, I know this is sure T V on it then, but um. Contract, what is, uh, I forgot. Oh, well. What is, that's in there, what she was talking about with, um. Certificate of Compliance, is that it?
Yeah, C, CMO, C of um, Certificate of Occupancy.
Okay. Certificate of Occupancy and cer- certificate of compliance, basically saying you have six months or whatever it is to bring it up to code and get rolling. And then if not, we have to impose our. Code of ordinances and fees and fines and everything else that comes along with it.
And um, so that I'm not taking up too much of everyone's time left, uh, these last two pages are just about finding and partnering with businesses. Um, and maybe potential strategies for how we can attract the things that we want. Including good old-fashioned cold calling and outreach, networking. Um, but I'm also um, working, um, you know, with the mayor to maybe develop like a business champion program or something. Cause I, I did a similar um, grant project in which we've worked with local businesses who met certain criteria. And we highlighted them or we lifted them up and promoted them as something that kinda had the city's stamp of approval, right? And so just kind of encourage, you know, uh, businesses to meet us where we're at. And what we're looking for as the consumer. And you know, getting a little bit of like free marketing, I guess you can say, as a, in return. And we will actually recommend your business or spotlight it, you know, like say for example, for the month and encourage people to go. Because you are giving us quality services or quality goods or so forth, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so basically, like when people ask us to promote their stuff on the public access channel or Facebook and everything, it's like, here's this application. You fill this out and if you check all these boxes and everything, then you get that type of promotion from the city.
Exactly, but you have to meet certain criteria. You know, cause I know that sometimes that I, I get residents feedback ball like, hey, have you been in there or this and it, it doesn't seem like it's. They necessarily care, depending on what it is, it could be anywhere from cleanliness to type of consumer, go ahead.
Do you want enforcement that sort, when you walk into these buildings in Inkster, you know, they're not clean, they're, you know, nasty?
Yes, that would get recommended to code enforcement.
Yes.
Or the health department, depending on what the severity of it is, yeah.
Dollar General.
Wait, which, the one that's closed now or which one?
Right here in the plaza.
Inkster, Michigan Avenue.
The Dollar Tree.
The yellow and bl- yellow and black? Okay, yeah, Dollar General, yep. Got you.
But any feedback or comments and thank you for your your feedback and and your questions.
We apologize uh to the viewing audience who cannot hear. They're fussing at him online because they they can't he- hear you. Because you're not at the microphone.
Um but that's it, uh this, like I said, these last two pages are about finding and partnering with businesses and potential programs and grants to consider for business attraction. Cause there are resources um from the state, like the Michigan Economic Development, of course, you know. They'll, they'll, they have certain, certain uh services or um things that they're willing to work with municipalities. For like, you know, helping to build Main Street or whatever, you know, and and so. And I know that's what a lot of us want is our like downtown and our Michigan Ave, you know, to be. Thriving.
Um just to re- uh go back a little bit real quick, what we were talking about, just for the viewing audience um with our residents here. She's just asking about the different businesses of being enforced for cleanliness and things of that nature and do we do that? Who would it go to, whether it's code enforcement or the health department and just different businesses around the community who aren't holding up their end of the stick. By doing so, so that's what we were expanding upon. Also, I did take a Main Street training back down in Myland, Michigan, some years back. Uh when I went, I was like, okay, this is cool, but this is more so for um, I felt like it's for a different department. It did get some insight though as to why when I could go through Canton or Plymouth or these other downtown areas where. That whole little strip is developed and it almost looks identical and it's all this mixed use and it's all walkable, that was the Main Street thing. And I realized like, oh, this is actually. If I, me, looking back at a old western and how everything was right there in downtown, that's kind of how it resembled, not that particular style, more modern. But everything was walkable when you went into town and was right there and then everybody went back home to their own um place of residence, the subdivision, yep, so.
And then that's what people are saying that they want, uh we're missing a lot of that middle housing, but some of it includes having direct access to retail. You know, perhaps like a loft style and then they can walk down. Now, that's not for everybody, right? Not everybody wants that. But there are some people who would love to just walk downstairs and go shop and then go back upstairs to their house, so.
I have a quick question.
Right ahead.
What's the status of that coffee shop on Michigan Avenue supposedly?
Mister Daddell, do you have any information on that? This time for Big B Coffee. The last time I remember the uh street, was that walkable communities thing we went on? When I last went, the uh was the last able to attend, uh Carrie, our engineer, one of our engineers through Benesh. I had asked her what was going on with it and she said they were waiting on some site plan elevations to be incorporated on the site plan. And submitted back to the community from the applicant. I don't know if that happened or not, but that was then, no.
Are we following up with them or anything? I mean, that's that's blight, that 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 building, I mean.
When I last asked about it, I was told that it was being followed up with and it was difficulty getting a hold of the applicant. When we did the safe streets, that was. We, yeah, we did a safe streets, um, cause. I think it was like more like March, I think it was more like March.
Why aren't they made to clean up around that building? If they're not gonna, I mean, if they're not gonna finish it right now, it looks horrible outside of the building.
That's a great question that I will inquire with code enforcement about. Um I don't know, I I glanced at that one, but I didn't look at that one closely. I don't know if they had a sticker on there or not, they might have. Yep, I will follow up with supervisor code enforcement on that one, Big B Coffee, let me um make a note of that right now. And and yeah, because you you're alluding to like all the construction stuff that's still sitting out there and everything.
Yes, it's horrible. If they can get away with it, they get, you know, they don't care. We're not following up on it. I pass by there, everything and I look over there, I'm like, okay, when is it going to move?
And that was something that I know the community was excited by. And was looking forward to, you know, hopefully could cause a chain reaction of sorts and get other people going, so.
My uh, my question was about this um Dairy Queen across the street.
That was sold last year.
Be a chill.
Chill and grill.
It's, what's, what's going on with that?
Originally, they they came, came to the planning department, they did ask some questions about setbacks and things of that nature. Um but in between that, the original owner sold it to someone else.
Oh, wow.
And so I don't know what the, what they're proposing to do. Uh they did ask a couple of questions, but it didn't, it didn't go any further than asking questions, uh we did um, well, the P P R. Plan um preliminary plan review and um explained it on what they had to do and then they changed ownership.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that was open for over forty years, right? And so and it wasn't even open one day last summer.
Real quick, I think we kind of moved out of miscellaneous in the second hearing of the public. I just wanted to update us. No, you're good, I I just, we started talking about things that do relate to business ecosystem, but I think we're in the second hearing of the public item number nine.
Yeah, it would be nice if we could get some, I mean, because we're about to get into the summer, like at least gets.
Are there many uh city-owned buildings on the Michigan Avenue Strip?
I would say no.
I don't think so.
On any of the main thoroughfares are there? They're all private.
Generally, we generally land more more so than buildings. If we do have a building, maybe one or two, I'd I'd say. Let's say we got six hundred parcels, we might have ten, but it's just a matter of where where those ten are.
That old muffler shop down there, is it Beach Daily?
John Daly in Michigan Avenue.
Michigan Avenue.
What's up with that?
I think it has an orange sticker on it.
I got somebody that wants to buy that building, but is it presently owned?
We don't.
It's on, it's owned by somebody because they've gotten a call before and they had to go over there and board it up and then they painted it brown at one point in time too, because it used to be like tan. Yeah, uh so somebody has it, not sure who. I thought, I feel like someone else had expressed interest in it at one point in time, then someone else jumped in and tried to do something, but then nothing happened.
But even if, let me ask, because if somebody buys that, we have a moratorium, even though that building was for that. Could they, they couldn't do a auto something?
Because of the moratorium and if I'm not mistaken, that might be at the beginning of the T C D. In which automotive-related businesses are not.
Oh, yeah, permitted. T C D starts at Harrison, right? Or? Yeah, it starts at Harrison and Michigan Avenue and goes down.
Down to the end.
To Beach Daily. All right, we got the maps right here. The one that says future land use. Or is it not here?
Yeah, no, it's on there, so we missed, we're looking at uh John Daly, that little slot says mixed development. Nope, wait a minute, I'm sorry, research, technology, no.
Oh, Town Center, so pink.
No, it's Town Center, yeah, it's pink, mixed development. John Da- yeah, that's um, that's mixed development, correct?
What was the question, I'm sorry?
The uh zoning for um that that Mr. The old Mr. Muffler Building, that that's mixed development?
Um f- future land use would be.
What is it currently?
I wanna say it's it's the T C D. That's what's sticking in my head.
Town Center, develop Town Center, okay.
So what kind of things can go in the Town Center development area?
Town Center development is generally um uses that you would see downtown and or a town center, you know. Uh lofts, uh restaurants.
It's right there on the next page, if you got the map already. Says the intent of the Town Center District is to provide a city identity, indicating to residents and visitors that they are in Inkster. This can be accomplished through visual cues such as prominent public buildings, lively street venues and changes in scale. This district builds upon recent commercial and residential development as well as this proximity to civic buildings and the Lower Rouge Parkway. A cohesive mix of low, medium, and high-density resi- residential convenience, retail, office, and public uses will add a visual richness. And then there's a second paragraph.
And yeah, pedestrian-friendly environment, pretty much.
Alrighty, ladies and gentlemen, well, yeah, we're the gentlemen. Is there anything further that we need to discuss? We don't have anyone else from the general public here in person. If not, then all minds are satisfied. The floor is open for a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved and supported. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. This meeting is now adjourned at seven fifty-six P M.